Okay, it's seven o'clock and we call the meeting to order. Rokoff?
Sarah?
Here.
Eric?
Here.
Nancy?
Here.
Ross?
Yeah.
Jay?
Yes.
Adria.
Okay, upcoming legislation. Do you want me to just go through them and talk about the new ones, or?
Yeah, if anyone's got any questions.
If I have any questions.
There's a number of them here. If anyone wants to go through one or more of them, that would be the time.
Most of the stuff we've already discussed.
Everybody's good with the new wording for the itinerary, right?
Yeah.
You got that?
Everybody good with solocans?
Yeah.
Street closures? We have the major site plan application. Are there any questions on that? Is there anything about the accepting the mountain rates is determined? I think that's just usual, you know? Is that, is that the one for the TIF, or is it the other one?
Where are you at?
Yeah.
Twenty-seven, twenty, twenty-four.
Oh, wow, we're way down.
Yeah, I got lost.
Well, we've already talked about those other ones.
Does anybody, we really haven't talked about the major site plan. We did a first reading and there wasn't any discussion at the previous county meeting.
Yeah.
I just wanted a quick review on E again. I know we did a first reading, but that's for what again exactly?
Maybe.
Do you want to back up on D?
We haven't done it.
Oh.
Back up on D and talk about the major site plan. Bill, do you want to?
On the major site plan?
This is just for, they're wanting to put in a smaller warehouse.
Yeah, this is, this is Van Trust, actually C O I, Rick and Becker, is putting in their building on lot five. And they are looking at putting in a smaller building than their other two were over a million square feet. This one's, I don't know what, we, everyone got a big copy of it. I'm not sure what was on it. As far as, yeah, it's a little bit smaller building, a huge parking lot. There's also a fueling station located on there. And what they're looking at doing, the last count I got was they was talking about doing approximately a hundred and fifty trucks in and out of there a day. And a lot of the trucks are going to bring in, drop them in the parking lot. And they're going to sit there and then they're going to come in, pick them up, take them off, take off with them. So there's not going to be a whole lot of loading and unloading like your typical warehouse.
But it's just a lot of traffic.
It's, like I said, probably a hundred and fifty trucks a day rolling in and out of there.
So is it, I wonder if it's going to be a trucking company's whole base? Knowing, knowing the end user would make it a lot easier to.
Yeah, and as of now, we don't know who the end user is. It's, it is being built site specific. So there is an end user in mind. They, they're listed as, well, Project Kevlar.
Kevlar.
Project Kevlar. So they, they're building it site specific. They are going to be coming back this group, this Project Kevlar is also, Rick and Becker, C O I, also owns lot five. Project Kemlar is taking over lot five as well. So it's one of, or lot six. Yeah, this is lot five. They're taking over lot six as well. And they're, so whoever Project Kemlar is, they're looking at taking over the final two that Rick and Becker, C O I owns.
This looks to be like one in the back. It's not off one of four, it's like seven, two.
Yeah, it's back up against the river and so is the other one right there.
So I don't think the traffic.
And they also with the, when they get to lot six, they're probably going to be coming, they, in fact, they've already approached us. They're looking at wanting to put in the parking lot first in the building second, because they think they may even need that parking lot for part of what they're doing on lot five.
So they, they're going to take over another fifty-eight acres for possible trailer parking?
They're looking at, there will be trailer parking on lot five once we get the plans. I don't know how much.
And then you said six might involve.
Or I'm sorry, lot six.
Which is fifty-eight point, fifty, yeah, fifty-eight point five.
Okay, well, they're, they're leaving space for a building to go up, but they're wanting to do the parking lot first before they put a building up on lot six. Lot five, they'll be doing the parking lot, the building and a refueling station. And they've also got an area, if you look at the map, they've got an area lined out where the trucks can roll in there and they actually going to have their trucks staged in queue, waiting their turn to pull in and park. So it's a pretty aggressive truck traffic coming in now.
So they're probably going to activate that traffic light then?
That's, that gets into the ODOT requirements whether or not they hit their quota. ODOT basically will tell us when they can activate the traffic light.
Guess they do a traffic study.
Yeah, I was going to say, is that something we have to have them?
They have to have the traffic studies per ODOT before they can.
My concern is the exchange way entrance is going to be their most direct in and out. Are we going to need to make it so they go over to State Route seven sixty-two? Because if not, we're going to have people turning with the tractor trailer either north or south at no light.
Well, I don't know that just because on the map it shows exchange ways, the closest one coming off one oh four, but I don't know if their traffic's actually going to come off one oh four, or if they're going to be heading towards route twenty-three.
Yeah.
Up to two seventy and that type of stuff. So, and also as of now, there is no traffic light there at exchange way, but there is one at the other side. So drivers may, I would think they would tend to go towards where the traffic lights at, but.
I mean, if not, we need to be in a position to react to that and somehow regulate which, which way they go out.
That's my concern too, is having the extra traffic on seven sixty-two versus, or I'm sorry, on putting it on one oh four versus seven sixty-two. If they're heading towards twenty-three, that's pretty trucking anyway, so I don't see anything wrong with that. But if we're bumping up with one oh four, that's going to be a lot of extra traffic, given that we have the stuff across the way being discussed by, what is it, Dorret and one oh four too. That'd be a lot of traffic.
I wonder if making exchange way a right in, right out, that's truck friendly would help. Because then they don't have a choice. I mean, they gotta go to seven sixty-two unless they're turning right. I mean, is that something we have to discuss with them now?
No, that's, that would come under if whatever, if council felt it was a problem, right now it's not a problem, obviously.
Right.
If it becomes a problem, if someone wants to put up signage and you kind of go at it, once you see there's a problem, a right in, right out, or something like that, is always something we could probably do.
Because there's.
But yeah, it's, I mean, you got to realize though, what you're looking there is just two lots. You still got, and if they build those two buildings, that takes us up to, what, five buildings? There's supposed to be about thirteen, fourteen buildings there.
Right.
So you've got a lot more traffic that's going to inundate that entire area up there.
That's why I wondered if we need to circumvent that early.
I wouldn't worry about that yet, considering we don't even have the traffic light. We don't have enough traffic to turn the traffic light on yet. So we're kind of.
Well, over here, I did it, but to stop them from making that turn without a light.
Well, as of now, there's nothing even there yet. So, and it probably won't be for another year.
I was going to say, what do you think the build-out time? Do you have any clue?
Um, they are, well, you've got the major site plan in front of you. They've already started pushing dirt for their mass excavation and leveling off the areas. Yeah, in fact, they did some of that, I believe, last fall. They was, they leveled off lot six? Is that the one they did? And now they wound up there over at five, building it first, but yeah. So they've leveled it all for buildings and parking lots and everything else. And as they understand, when you move dirt, you're moving it at your own risk.
Right.
You know, because your major site plan has not been approved yet. So, yeah, like I said, that's, um, yeah, the dirt is set all year. It'll set, it'll set all this winter. They moved, I think, some more in the spring. And it'll probably set all winter and hit our next spring is what I would expect them to do. What's the major site plan if it's approved?
Probably what, eighteen months after they start?
And I think, and just not to jump ahead, but on number four down here, you'll see a C O I, Rick and Becker variance request. That ties in with that major site plan. There's two corners on that site plan that are touching a floodplain back along the river. And where it touches, they have to, they can't build what they want to build in their major site plan unless council grants the variance for those two areas. We have done that before, I believe with I D I.
They have to get approval from the feds.
I was going to say, is it water engineers have to?
I, I don't know. I don't think so, because where they're encroaching is, the feds require so much, and I'm not sure what the distances are, but the feds have one distance and the village has even a larger distance. And I think that's how we did the last time. They encroached maybe twenty feet or something, and it was a village regulation about the encroachment. It wasn't into the feds. Ours was more broader than what the feds was. So, and we, and I think it was I D I that we agreed to, we let them go ahead and encroach a little bit on it.
Encroach on the floodplain.
Yes. So they are basically kind of asking the same thing for a couple of corners of the building, just because it gets a little close. And they try to put a road going all the way around the building and it's, I think it's more or less that road going around the building is what's encroaching a little bit on the floodplain. And where that is, where they're encroaching, yeah, they're into the floodplain, but they're probably twenty feet above the, the side of the river. I mean, it's, it's right there to drop off cliff. But yeah, it's.
The distance though.
Yeah, it's the distance. So that's what they're doing. So like I said, those two pieces of, well, actually the variance does not require legislation. It has a public hearing that we'll be having at the, prior to the October seventh meeting. There'll be a public hearing at six forty-five.
And all two only plans are going to be there.
Yeah, yeah. So they have, there'll be a public hearing next, before the next council meeting at six forty-five for the variance request. And then the variance itself requires no legislation. It's just a motion. But they, the variance will have to be granted before, if you're planning on accepting the major site plan, the variance has to be granted before the major site plan.
I guess my only concern with that is, and I don't know what the other building is, but if we're talking that large a truck traffic and we're very, given we're variance on the floodplain, what if we have a fueling? What kind of catastrophe does that?
EPA will handle all that.
Yeah, but is it going to affect our water? Is it going to affect?
I mean, that's, EPA regulations are going to, are going to dictate what they can do and what they can't do. And that's something that, you know, yeah, we need to make sure that, that our interests are maintained on that, that the EPA's will use that as a guideline.
Well, do they have to get involved before we issue a variance to make sure it's okay, or?
We're not, this, this doesn't have to do with the, with the fueling.
No, but I, we're still going to have all those trucks. Somebody drives off the side or punctures a fuel tank with a parking thing and we're giving them, then the floodplain will also protect the runoff into the river and our waters?
In some, in some instances.
I, I don't know. I mean, maybe I'll put the cart before the horse, but.
Yeah, like I said, we're, the, anything like that, any hazard, it's, hazardous spills right there, like that, that all goes through. The EPA's out there and everybody else. I mean, the fire department would have more say in that than we would.
Check with them prior to.
They have to check with the EPA.
They have.
They have to be in compliance.
So is that something we can make sure that they do before we make a motion for the variance? Make sure they got that cleared?
Well, that's, like I said, right now, this variance, what they're wanting a variance for, this is a commercial point boundary they're crossing, not an EPA boundary. The EPA boundary may be like twenty-five feet off where the river is today. Our boundary is fifty feet off the river. So the EPA is not even concerned, and that's why they don't have to go to the EPA for this variance, because there's no encroaching going on onto the EPA regulated stuff. This is strictly something Commercial Point did years ago in our book. You know, they've decided they want a little bit larger area.
That makes sense. So Bill, given them a variance on ours, doesn't put any more on our plate?
Doesn't change the EPA. EPA, you can't build within so many feet of a hundred-year plane.
Okay, so it doesn't put any more on us by waiving our rules. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, resolution twenty-nine, twenty, twenty-four. Wendy, this is one you would like us to probably waive at the next meeting?
We skimmed out E.
Oh, because we started there. Okay.
Yeah, E is just the tax levies for, just saying that we agree with the inside millage that they're going to just going to get, which is two mills.
Yeah.
That's one of the property taxes.
So what if this is a?
If we don't agree? If we don't agree, we probably should have said something at the budget commission.
I, I believe I asked that question too, and I never got an answer.
We asked the auditor.
Well, I mean, we had to agree.
So.
I just asked.
At the end of it, what does that mean exactly? Does that mean everybody's taxes are going?
Well, no.
This is, this is the way that the property taxes divided out.
Okay.
There's inside millage and out of that inside millage, they're going to get commercial points, two mills.
Not much.
And this is something we have to do every single year?
Okay.
This really hasn't changed.
And I, when we had our meeting, I did ask the auditor, who determines the inside millage? Because the most you can have is ten mills. And it's divided up between the school, the township, the village, and whoever else was on their list there. And I kind of asked them, I said, well, who makes that decision? And they couldn't tell me.
So it's not supported by?
He was, he was taking, he was taking notes and was going to ask, or guessing, the budget commission, which consists of the auditor, the county prosecutor, and the county treasurer. Or guessing are the ones who divvy up the inside millage. But he couldn't tell, he couldn't give me a straight answer.
You think there'd be O R C on that?
There's, I, I believe there's a limit for what the schools can get from inside versus outside, but other than that, I'm not sure it's controlled by the code. The, it was controlled by agreement.
The overall code stated the maximum inside millage is ten mills.
Yeah.
But how it's divvied up, yeah, that's.
And yes, Nancy, this one that we're talking about now, we'll have to have be passed at the October seventh, because it's actually due to him.
Twenty-nine, that's twenty, twenty-four.
Nope, twenty-seven, that's twenty, twenty-four.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's the one that has to be passed. The twenty-nine, it can go through the three readings.
I, yes, I am. Because I had all the other ones marked on. Okay, now, twenty-nine, twenty, twenty-four.
That's just your temporary budget, and it can go through the three readings. Again, for the new ones, that is just estimates. It's budgeted amount for the first quarter of twenty twenty-five. It's based off of estimates that we think that we're going to take in. It's not our permanent budget. It's just to get us through that first quarter. Yeah.
All right, the resolution thirty, twenty, 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 twenty-four. Are there any questions about this? Or, I mean, this is something personally, I think we should waive readings and get going on it.
Okay, which, which one is?
This is the Belshazer project.
Sorry, I had that one marked on.
Did you?
I'm like, what, what? Who cares? No, I care.
Just so we can, you know, not slow the process any, down anymore than what it is.
So it's due for a first reading at the next one? Is that what this is, or?
Okay.
Or we're hoping to waive it, okay?
Yeah.
We still need to change the, the language on.
It's, it's changed. What I sent council is the old ver, was the original version. Susan did change that, and what we sign into law will be, has been changed. In fact, I, my copy's the newer one, and I'd already sent the packet out when Susan sent it to me. It's been corrected.
Been noted. Okay, thank you. Be sharp, that one.
Okay, the next, um, resolution twenty-eight, twenty, twenty-four is basically just moving money.
That is a, what, the TIF one, where we have to move money to give, we didn't have enough for paying M I homes, the money we owe.
This is a whole new learning process. I'm getting much better at it and I know what to do.
Do we need to waive that?
Yes, while it's pending, it's just administrative action, so there's no free reading.
Which one of those do we have?
Okay, and the last one is the ordinance twenty, twenty-four fifteen. I'm going to hand this over to Sarah.
Um, so originally, this was a resounding request that I submitted on behalf of Stephen and myself. But since that time, I've had to make some business decisions for myself, so I am no longer part of this, and it will need amended. I don't think that he's going to want to rezone to general commercial. I think it's going to be multi-family housing, so it will need amended.
I had a discussion with Stephen. He had called me and he'd asked me to bring this up. So should I wait and do that in additional business? Or am I okay to just to kind of like?
I'll go ahead and hit it now. You might as well, might as well cut it now.
No, we haven't had a first reading on it yet, so.
But the letters have gone out.
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
And he had said he would like to put in eight kind of senior housing apartments back there. One bedroom, one bath, about a thousand square foot each. I asked him what were his intentions with the garage? And he said he would have two ideas. One is to put a couple, a couple walls and have them be like parking spaces for the tenants there. The other one was to rent it to store RVs or boats. I said, well, I kind of liked the first option better, you know, given it to your residents. So he had asked, and I told him he would have to talk to administration about this. If, since this zoning had already started, we haven't had the first reading. If it could be amended to be residential, I did say, you know, you would have to make sure you send the letters out to everyone. It would not be on the same date as Sarah's would have been, because there's not enough time to get it in the paper and what, and what's.
I think it's something we have to really do.
So I just, I told him to contact the office about that. That wasn't my decision made. He just wanted me to get an idea of what council thought about that idea.
My concern is, what, seven, seven acres with eight homes? That's a pretty big density.
Well, it's, it's one building, you're just going to keep the same. You've got to convert the building.
Yes, yes. It's going to convert the building.
Okay, now, that, we still have to, we'll still have to go through a zoning process.
Yes, he just wanted to know if he could amend it since it was commercial to amend it to multi, multi-use. And I told him that wasn't my decision.
If, if we amend it, we will, if we amend the existing one, we'll, we have to send registered certified letters out and let everyone know, hey, we're amending this. Instead of you was notified, it was going to be general commercial, now it's going to be whatever code fits that.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And if we don't amend it, if we just say, okay, yank it and start completely over, we still got to send letters out and tell the people, don't come to the meeting because it's been pulled.
Wouldn't it be cleaner just to restart it?
Well, it's, it's just kind of.
We're not delaying it much, right?
Well, it's, as far as the delay or anything, he would have to understand, okay, his sixty-day clock that started, because once we get that, we have sixty days to act on them. He would real, have to realize, okay, you're, you're going, your clock, your clock's going to start over, first of all. So it's going to take a little bit. Second of all, if we amend the existing one, then we send out one certified letter to everybody, once again, and tell them, hey, it's been changed from general commercial to this is what they're now requesting. We do have to hold another public hearing.
Right.
We'll have to have it in the newspaper, so there would be the cost. He would have to bore the cost. He'd have to bear the cost of doing additional certified letters, once again. He would have to bear the cost of putting it in the newspaper again. We would do another sort of, we'd do another public hearing again with the correct language. End of the day, as opposed to just pulling it and amending it, uh, you're looking the cost of part of the application fee, and that's probably it.
Because we're not to have new parts of these where he's going to show us what he's doing, you know, from the building, correct?
Yeah, he could have got new drawings.
So.
Yeah.
He would have that.
Half the packet would have to be redone anyways.
Yeah, so if it amended, the exhibits that you would see would be changed.
And, and it would, it would be a, a request to rezone it if, that's what?
I have, I haven't talked to him. I.
Well, what is it now?
Yeah.
It's R three, high, medium density.
No, it wouldn't be R three.
Multi-family.
It is now.
Oh, it is now.
Yeah, it is now.
It couldn't be general commercial because there's.
Right.
No.
Written residential residences are only.
It would almost have to be.
I'm not sure what the zoning is for multi-family.
Multi-family, about here.
Six units, six apartment buildings.
Right.
On an acre lot. Is that what it was, Nancy? On an acre lot, but you can only, you can have twelve units per building. So what he's wanting to do with one building, I think, would fit. They have to be.
What was the zoning?
The multi-family.
Multi-use.
Multi-family apartments. That's what I looked up.
Multi-family apartment residential this year. The minimum lot size is three acres.
The zoning, that's up to trailer park.
The minimum lot with three hundred.
There is no M one.
There still is.
Yeah.
In our current, in our current zoning code?
I thought it was to strike the multi-family.
There is on the map, M one still exists. It's no longer in the current code, but it still exists because it was never removed.
You see, it was, I don't, I, I'm trying to remember, like, it's been.
Because that's what we kept bumping into. There is, I don't believe there's an M one in the new book.
There's not.
But that was zoned M one. It was never changed.
What is the trailer park zone there?
It was, it was.
More road is the M F A, multi-family apartment.
Yeah, that's what this one is.
That's who lives on the map. Yeah, multi-family. Yeah.
I mean, I think, you know, it would kind of flow in that area because there's a lot of, you know, seniors and.
Well, that, that would, I mean, it, it seems reasonable.
Yeah.
That seems like a reasonable request. I, I, I wouldn't hate to think how much work we're going to have to go into that, but.
The minimum square footage is a thousand square feet.
Yeah, and that's what he said. They'd be one bedroom, one bath. He said they would be, you know, not the typical rate that we have, you know, because there's a lot of older people that want to stay here but can't afford to stay here.
You're looking at me like. I mean, you know.
So I'm, I'm just saying, you know.
Pointed at.
That's where he's going. So he just wanted to kind of get a feel of like what people thought about it, and then, you know, he can, and then.
Well, the one, and, and to, to discuss is, no matter what kind of a change is made back there, there needs to be some very strong consideration in my mind about, about widening Third Street so that, First Street.
First Street.
First. First.
First Street, yeah, I forget which, widening that to make it a two-way to that property.
I would not want a two-way.
I, I would, I just hate.
Because here's the thing.
Traffic.
We had to.
One way all the way down.
We had to make that road a one-way in order for people to get mail.
Right, and that's fine, because that one piece doesn't make it, there are no customers on that stretch anyway.
And plus, I've had this happen to me. When I'm coming down Harsh Alley and I'm turning that curve, people coming in the wrong way. I've almost hit them head-on.
Well, it'd have to be widened and.
It would have to be widened and, and, and stop, and stop mechanism, always stop, or what, I mean, yeah, there, I think there's a way, but, but to, to take, to take additional traffic and if you've got, if you've got eight apartments, you've got sixteen cars that are going to be in and out of there and how many times a day, and to run that traffic down Harsh Alley, that to me seems to be more of an aggravation and a burden, especially the narrow road in the, the corner there on, on Third. That's, that's a tough, a tough lane. But just, you know, this, that would be my only consideration about it.
We also need to make sure that it meets the minimum standards for M F A. Because he's less than one acre on the lot. I think there's a minimum for that.
I, I don't know. I don't know what that is. I don't know.
So what I'll do is I'll get back with him, tell him to check out the zoning code, contact the office, and go from there.
Yeah, read the book.
Yeah, yeah, have him check it out and call in, set up a meeting with us.
Yeah.
And we can go over it with him, and we'll make sure we get all the history and backstory of it. I, Nancy, I did have one other item that's not on everybody. I got a J that nobody else has on my agenda. Now, we had a, and it came in today, and I don't know if it'll be on the October seventh agenda or not yet. Foxfire submitted a final plan application for phase three, part two.
Oh.
So, but they, it hasn't been approved by our solicitor yet. I sent him a copy of the legislation this afternoon.
Yeah, and I saw that, but I did not even open it, because I knew it was a flash that I had to get into.
Yeah, so anyway, it has, the legislation has to be approved by the solicitor. It has to go to Susan. We're going to have her look at it, make sure she's good with it. And there's also a performance bond that has to be paid, has to be put up prior to coming to council. So if all of that happens between now and October seventh, it may be on the agenda, and if it is, it'll just be a first read, first of three readings. If it doesn't, then we just, it'll be at the next meeting.
The further north section of that, is that moving north to that next section?
It, it's.
It's just going west.
West, it's more west, all the way west.
Okay, it's going more west.
But it, it just came in today, so it's, it may not even make the next meeting if we don't get everything done.
I don't know, what about more can on the major site plan? Will that be on the October seventh meeting? That's the other thing that came in.
We have a K.
I have a K.
K, yeah, K.
Oh.
Well, that's not on there. That's what Jim was reviewing today.
He was reviewing?
Major sites.
Today. Well, if he's reviewing it, then I haven't seen it yet.
That's the thing, when he told you he had questions, that he wanted to go over a couple things with you.
Okay.
So just in case.
Okay.
Okay, then there may be, maybe another major site plan.
Yeah.
We do a reading before we discuss it at the town.
Yeah, we, we did that with the, yeah, we'd do a reading and then you. Yeah, we'd do a reading and then you come back the next COW meeting and discuss it or whatever with everything. Yeah.
We don't have an L.
I know.
Um, we've pretty much already covered the variance request unless there's any other questions about it. Craig Stevenson is coming to do a presentation for us at the next council meeting. He owns about twenty-four acres off from Scioto Crossing, and he's wanting to bring in about twenty-four homes.
Twenty-four acres, you said?
I wondered about twenty, what'd you tell me?
Ten, I thought.
Ten.
Was it ten?
No, this is the.
It's like fifteen total.
But with twenty-four homes.
It's just the ten acres.
Okay, my bad.
Twenty-eight homes.
Twenty-eight.
It's ten acres and it actually, there's a road button off from.
Direct.
From Scioto Crossing.
Directly east of Scioto Crossing.
So towards, well, old Miley.
Oh.
Old Miley.
So it's going, it's going towards one oh four, but it doesn't make it all the way out there.
So with five acres to the front, it's not a part of it.
I don't say he doesn't, he wouldn't have all the way to one oh four.
Okay.
So he's just going to come and show us what his idea is and what he wants to bring in, so just a heads up on that. Liquor board hearing request, uh, the request we got is to transfer the liquor license Mike Havens to, um, the tax bar, which are the new owners.
Request come from the liquor board?
Yes, yes.
So they've approved it?
No, they're asking, they're asking if we want a hearing.
If we want a hearing. Now, I, I've asked, um, Mayor if we've had any complaints, you know, about noise and stuff.
The last two months have been.
There have been no complaints?
I just, I was.
I heard them last week opening Walker Point.
Yeah, this, this week.
Thursday night, it was, I could hear it clear as a bell, right, just as soon as I opened my front door.
And most of it is the motorcycle. We had it on Sunday.
Oh, man, I hear that too.
Yeah, we had it on Sunday. The, the noise for the motorcycles was just so loud coming in while they were down there. So it wasn't coming from the establishment. It was definitely coming from the vehicles, is what I heard. Uh, I mean, it was.
Well, it comes from the vehicles, but the vehicles are all going to and from the establishment.
Yeah, absolutely.
Enforcement different, at a different.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I.
I mean, we have enforcement out there for motorcycles, which needs to be enforced.
They qualify for the licenses.
Yeah.
They do, the same, both of them?
They're just going to transfer, yeah.
Just transfer the same.
There's very little that you can have on your record to not qualify. You have to actually be convicted, it doesn't matter what, you know? So the standards are not, yeah, they're, now, we can ask for a hearing so that the liquor board looks at totality of the change, the perceived change, you know, since they became involved, if we want to use legislative body, body, and then the state looks at everything and decides whether they're a good risk or not.
And, um, I, I agree with that sentiment.
I mean, that's, that's our, and this is only because I worked with the forty-seven hundred section of the ORC so much, that's why I know the process.
Which means they qualify for.
Well, if it's come to us to ask for a hearing, then they've looked over and the basic qualifications are there before they would contact us to ask if we want to request a hearing. And then Bill, I said, you go up, right? If we request a hearing with the liquor board?
Request a hearing, yeah, I just need a witness. But they're pretty much pro forma.
Now, is this something that, um, people who have an issue can go and listen to their?
People other than the village can go, um, should they wish to protest.
Okay. So then if they listen to all that and they're still like, then it's settled.
Right, then it's made their decision.
Right.
It's, I, I.
Then they make the decision, then there's a one nineteen hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the transfer, a one nineteen hearing is just an administrative trial.
I think.
Where they can present their evidence.
For our due diligence, I think we should send it for a hearing because village residents have had an issue. And I think if we don't, I think we're discounting those issues or perceived issues, whether it's the business or the part that's not under control, but I do think we should put it to the state.
That way they can feel like they're hearing from a non-bias person.
I think what you need to keep in mind though, this is strictly for changing the name ownership. And I can hear, the first thing they're going to say, them problems were created when it was in a different owner's name.
But the perception was.
Well.
It happened when they became part owners and now because.
But no, as far as the license, their name isn't on the current license anywhere.
But we had.
So that's the thing, that's, they're going to hang their hat on that.
We have precedent. That's what they argue with the state, though. I mean, that's part of the hearing. We're just saying that we want the state to hear the villages, what the village constituents have put to the legislative body. And I, I'm not going to say I agree or disagree, but you are correct, but that's what the hearing's for. That's not for this legislative body, that's for the state.
But I don't think we can make that decision whether we want a hearing or not in this meeting.
No, no.
Correct, yeah. And we'll have to, and the council will have to vote whether or not they wish that request of public care.
Have it in by October fifteenth, I think, October tenth, October fifteenth.
So that's something that we do at the next meeting?
Seventh, yeah.
Yeah.
So there's no date on this letter, you think you got it September fifteenth?
Yes, ideally, see, there's the, it's the tenth or the fifteenth of October that I have to have it turned back.
Okay, that's your L.
Page two. This says nine eleven, it was mailed, need a response by nine fif, or ten fifteen twenty-four.
There you go. There you go.
All right.
Okay, um, the next one is Addison Farms.
All right, Addison Farms, got a handout for y'all.
Do we need to go in a second?
Not yet, no. This handout was, uh, submitted to Alan and to myself. There should be more than enough copies floating around. I made nine of them. I've spoken to Glenn Dugger, who is the attorney that presented here, and I spoke with, uh, Joe Miller over at Bores on this. They went back to the owner, they redid, uh, based on what Ross had found, they redid their site plan, they took it down to be inside of code requirements. They got rid of, um, the perceived problem of the.
Apartments.
Apartments or whatever you want to call them in the back. They are now within code, within the limits, and the next hurdle that they face that they're asking for help with is the TIF. So we're all on the same page. Alan has been adamant and very forthright with them that any TIF dollars are for issues outside the property. They've asked for a TIF and you have it in your package, and I don't expect you to read and digest this, um, but I do want you to take this home, um, and read it so that we can have discussion in open session if they choose to take this off the table. But you'll see the TIF that they're asking for, a thirty-year TIF. And after you get through the site plan.
Oh, okay.
The fact is, it says Addison Properties, yeah, August thirteenth. Once again, this is a letter that came to Alan.
Market.
And this is the TIF that they're asking for, for all of the public improvements inside, not necessarily outside. The way this prints off there, we believe there was, um, an error in, uh, the math, how it prints off. Alan has gone through and lined up the numbers, and it's just a matter of converting this from Excel to, uh, Word that kind of moved some of the numbers over, but this is the TIF that they're asking for. If you will recall, there is a pre-annexation agreement. In the pre-annexation agreement, you all agreed to.
The old council agreed.
The old council agreed to negotiate a TIF with the owner. Nothing more, nothing less.
Right.
And we're still at that, nothing more, nothing less, um, for the TIF. But you have this packet in front of you. I've spoken with council, traded phone calls with council. They're still not at the point where they're going to make a decision on taking this off of the table. If you'll recall, they put this on the table at the third.
Third.
Third reading?
Yeah.
Prior to the third reading.
Prior to the third reading, it was put on the table. They have to make a motion to take it off the table. And before they did that, they wanted to set up a meeting or have a discussion on, um, how you wanted to address the TIF and if you wanted, um, any further information just in regards to the TIF. I think that their engineering and their drawing is pretty much done. I think they addressed your concerns, Ross, and now we're at the second part of this, which is if we're coming in, we're going to need a TIF to do this. And with that, um, that's about as far as I can go in open session.
Question. Which one's the most updated one? This one or this one?
The one that I, the one that I attached to that letter. It's the most recent one that they sent out.
So then these would be.
All single families.
Bill, this, would this be a good point for us to go into executive session so we can discuss some of the matters from the last executive session?
If you want to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss, um, matters with legal counsel regarding, um, lawsuit or potential legal liability, most certainly can, you need to make a motion and have a roll call and take a vote.
I would like to make the motion to go into executive session.
Is your second, what's that?
Roll call?
Do I read that or do she?
Shouldn't he be reading while we're going into executive session?
Do I need to read this for me?
Go ahead.
For Central Ohio Rice Code, section one twenty-one, point twenty-two, section G three, I move to enter into an executive session, a conference with attorney for a public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are subject of pending or imminent court action.
Is there a second? Jay second. Roll call.
Jay?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
I would also ask that, um, Wendy Sayers, since we might be talking about the TIF in here.
Do you want me here?
Yes, I want the mayor and this officer here, sorry. Yes, do you have a motion to leave executive session and come back to your meeting?
Yeah, motion to return to regular meeting.
Second?
Well, second.
Roll call? Sarah?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yeah.
Jay?
Yes.
Okay, next is the.
Seven fifty-seven.
Is the outdoor performance legislation there?
Yeah, um, so last year, there were so many conversations with the noise and it's, most of it come around the, the outdoor performances is where the biggest misconceptions, but it sounds like not only residents, but maybe council or our law enforcement was confused when they were going to write a citation for one. So I, this is just something that I thought would maybe clean the process up, uh, it would put the rules out there, and then if there's somebody that doesn't have this done, this action by council, and they're having any performance with two or more people, uh, performing at the same time, then it shut down immediately upon complaint. Uh, I, I mean, there are some things that are probably going to need to be fine tuned, but I, I think this would be, you know, a good thing for in the future, and it does allow for each sponsor, owner or whatever to have one per year. Any parts of it can be set aside or amended by council. I mean, there are some sections, and my underlying thought is as we get bigger, we have bigger performances, we may have to put further things to where if it's over expected X number of crowd, we might have to have an inspection done, you know, of the area, make sure the fire department, make sure everybody's in, you know, our, our chief of police is involved. So this would be, you know, for, definitely down the road, but it would also make people understand the responsibility when they bring in a live outdoor performance. The, the men's club would still be able to have their thing, the car show, the bike thing, the bar could have, so one thing that we had by the previous owner of the bar was everybody needed to be equal, and this puts everybody in the village on an equal playing field. And as a legislative body, if we don't feel that it's in the best interest of our constituents, we can turn down any of them if we so desire by vote, and then they just can't have it. I, I by no stretch think it's perfect the way it is, but I thought it would, you know, maybe kickstart to see if this is something that we would like to move forward with, or is this something that you feel is over governing?
My only question is, um, is this sort of already covered under the, that we just spent a lot of time on? I mean, isn't this kind of like covered?
No, because the noise is with so many different things. This would make it a special permit to have outdoor performances to where it would allow our police to know about how many people you're expecting, so if down the road they need to change scheduling for that particular time because you're expecting, you know, hundreds or five hundred or a thousand people, uh, it would let them know if there is a violation, whoever's name is on that application is who is responsible, who would be cited. It would also allow for the, the immediate shutdown if they didn't follow the steps. So it would allow the village to have more of an understanding of what's going on. So we might know they have, they have live music on a Thursday or Saturday, but we don't know it's a full band, which is totally different because as was proven with a live band, even when they turned the soundboard off, it was still so loud in the surrounding houses. So it, the live band was just, you know, it was too loud and there was really, by the time the police gave them the warnings they felt needed for enforcement, their time had passed and they just shut down like fifteen minutes early.
So, and this, it says no one can conduct an outdoor performance except pretty much over the summer, Memorial to Labor Day?
Right.
Okay, so no other ones. Does this count for if someone was going to hire somebody for like, um, a wedding or something that happens in their backyard or?
Not if it's just like a DJ, if it's a band, so it's two or more people.
Okay.
So if they have a, yeah, if they would have a, let's say, uh.
Like two live instruments?
Yeah, an instrument or something, because my thought was with two or more, chances are it's going to be live instruments, which is going to be harder to regulate. So yes, it would be a homeowner, a business, it, it's, you know, five oh one C three, anybody that's going to do that. And it's just more accountability and allows the, the village as we grow and would have possibly bigger performances to prepare.
Do you have, um, I might have missed this in looking at it, um, did you look at other areas? Is this similar to what other?
I couldn't find it, this is literally just from my knowledge of the Ohioirise Code, how it's written, and listening to the totality before my council times and council times, I didn't find anybody else. I think Grove City has a permit process, but quite honestly, I didn't dig through to find where it was actually written. I did look at their, their application, um, and it, you know, maybe when it comes, if this passes and we go to an application, maybe that's something I look at to help do the application, but no, this is one hundred percent just listening to the concerns from everybody over the last few years.
Problem, solve it.
Yeah, and just preparing for the future.
So you're saying, okay, so your background is if there's more than one performer, that's how it gets loud and that's how.
Correct.
Hoping to do that, okay.
Yeah, it doesn't make it so, everybody in the, the village, whether they're leasing, leasing, owner, they're all eligible.
Everybody, yeah, okay.
It's just, it puts it as an action of council, and then that way, we're not getting blindsided by somebody that sees us at Pettit's. Did you know they had a live band? Well, yeah, because we approved it. It's not, what do you mean, where, who, when? You know, it's just, it kinda holds us accountable too for our decisions when it comes to things like that, because if we all, if a majority approves it, we can't hide from it.
So I think the thing with that is, um, how, will we have to, if this went through, would we have to let people know that, hey, there's a new permit process in order to hold an event like this? Like, how do people know to ask, is there even a permit? So like, for me, you know, I, let's say I don't know and I'm moving new, and I'm like, oh, well, I'm gonna have, you know, a band come play for a graduation party, how would people know that they need a permit for it?
Education, or if they would call in, I mean, I would hope that people that live in the municipality would think that, to call if they're gonna have something that could disturb, you know, their neighbors. And it, I believe it says.
Common sense isn't common.
True, and I believe it, it, if you have one, like, that sits out, that would happen to be in a village, I don't remember the, the distance I put, but if it's over a certain distance, you don't need one, if it's from a residential area. So if somebody wanted to have one over in one of the empty fields that was sold to A W S, they wouldn't necessarily need, well, they, no, they probably wouldn't need one, because they're without, they're outside, Toyota Crossing and all that.
They're within a hundred yards of residential property in the township.
I don't know if township residential would affect, because ours is for.
You said a hundred yards in radius to residentially zoned property.
Yeah.
There are people across the street on direct roads, I'm sure is.
Yes, I don't know, Bill, would that mean our residential or any residential? I mean, I wrote it, but I don't know how that would be enforced.
It would only be within the village limits for your legislation.
Okay.
There is currently a special use permit that you'd have to get anytime you have an outdoor event, um, there's an application process, there's a code section on it, nothing specific to what his legislation is, which is outdoor performances.
Isn't that the one that we were getting rid of?
I think we, we, we're in the middle of repealing that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And replacing it with the street closure, so that, that one disappears. So there would, if, well, that's up for a second reading.
Yeah.
And if that's passed, the, um, there is no special use permit.
Right.
In the village.
That would be specific to this, to a live performance.
Yeah, it'd just be a special use permit for live performance.
Yeah.
Just take the existing application form and add a couple of words to it.
Um, well, there'd be more than that, because this says by resolution of council for each outdoor performance, that's gonna be a three-month reading of resolutions?
Didn't I say it has to be in at least sixty days?
And whatever the case is, so someone wants to have a band, they're gonna have to notify within sixty days? Yeah, but you could change it.
What if they don't know?
Yeah, that's my.
And they paid for a band, it's like, I have no idea you had that, I mean, we can, we can hope that people would call, or we can hope that people look online, but in reality, they're not.
No.
I mean, a lot of our residents don't know a lot of the law, I mean, because it's crazy, because they, they constantly change. So I guess with, with the app and with, you know, the website, they can search by, you know, outside performance or outside music, and it would populate that we have something once it's passed.
One out, one outdoor performance per twelve-month period?
Except for the bars.
That's for everybody, but we can make it go for three days for the men's club. Because we can.
So they're only allowed the bar, Doughboys, you're only allowed one performance?
If you read, it's each owner, sponsor, or applicant is allowed one. So if it's a different sponsor, then they could have more than one if council approves.
But if I owned a bar and I just wanted to have a band, I really, yeah, I couldn't do it.
Correct.
Well, you find someone to sponsor for you.
Right, you could ask your.
You do it one week, I do it the next, Bill does it the next, Ross does it the next.
Sites is specific, not person.
It's person-specific, not site-specific.
Person, not site.
So I could have a band every week if I wanted to.
If council would allow you to do that.
But they have to let us know sixty days.
No, I, dude, it's a good sponsor, right?
Right, but they still have to, we still have to vote to approve that.
Sixty days in advance.
So we're gonna vote for every band that plays in the village at Commercial Point.
How many do you think there're gonna be?
Well, how many concerts was there this summer alone? Men's Club did eight or ten different performances over there over four days?
No, 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 that could be all in one permit.
Okay, one permit for that, how many did the bar do? How many did Station House do?
Station House never did one with multiple. They did their guy.
Yeah, they, they've had a couple people sitting out there singing.
Okay.
So they have done multiples. They, um, obviously Doughboys have done multiples.
I think they did three this year, I think.
And, and it's, what is the big difference between multiples and one person? I mean, if you got an amp, you can turn it up or turn it down.
You're right, but the, 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 the thing is, when you get to multiple and you have drums, you have guitars, even with the soundboard off, those are way too loud to be in these areas. I mean, that was proven this year.
Is it that what our new zoning ordinance is supposed to be doing?
But it's, it, you're right.
I, I can get an amplifier and a receiver.
Right.
And I got speakers that you can probably hear up here if I turn them up, both my amps on them.
I mean, I, I've got the same thing, it's just, that's what I mean, if you think it's, it's overstepping, no big deal. I mean, this is just a thought, and it would, it would make it, I mean, one of the problems with this year, there was a performance, and quite honestly, uh, the person didn't know who to enforce it, they didn't know who to cite. He said, who's in charge of it, who do I cite?
I think that's more of an education.
Well, it's, it's an education enforcement, yes.
Yes.
So, yeah.
I guess I would ask, who didn't know who to cite?
The officer didn't.
Which officer?
It was the officer that works Thursdays, it was, uh.
Okay, well, you know, if that's, if, if they don't, if, if there's music coming from Doughboys, or the Station House, or anywhere else in town, if he don't know who to cite, then yeah, we'll have a word with him and explain to him.
Here was the problem.
That's pretty simple.
You had three owners, you had.
Doesn't matter.
Bartender, a manager, and you had the band.
Site the business, move on.
You know, I mean, so he's like, okay, who, who is it? Who, because you gotta have a person, you can't cite the.
Well, I guess he didn't bring that concern to the chief.
Maybe not, it, it, you know, it was right after, he was like, who would I, who would I cite? I'm like, well, to me, I'd cite them all, and, you know, let, let the court figure it out.
Yeah, like permit holders, right.
That's exactly.
Yeah, that's what I, I would have done. So, I mean, if we don't wanna move forward, no big deal.
I think maybe we work on education more, and, um, maybe, you know.
We're at the end of the year now.
Yeah, just some education and then maybe revisit it, don't trash what you wrote, but let's, you know.
Oh, it's just saved, I mean.
That's good. Do you know what I mean? Like, just save it in case, but let's try working on the noise ordinance first. And education.
Is that it on that subject?
Yeah.
All right, now I had, um, asked for this to be on here, pond fountain legislation. I had a meeting with John Gross this morning, because he couldn't come here this evening. Just the concerns around some of the areas, developments that, um, luckily the one, uh, by Chestnut, the sage just cleaned up, there's a couple ponds, um, it was basin six, five and six maybe that I saw in the, um, the newer part of Foxfire that has no fountain, and I don't know if it has stone around it or not because the cattails are all.
It does, it does have stone.
The nude Foxfire?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure they're waiting to finish up before they put fountains in.
Um, well, John said they should be in there.
Should they be in?
Yeah. So he was gonna check on that, um, we did check on the, the old Foxfire, he pulled out the plants, there was not a fountain in there's plants.
Right.
So I'd asked him, we, we talked last year briefly about a timeline of when to have these fountains running, and ideally, he would like legislation to have them run from April, April through October. Some keep them running all year, but he said at least that minimum.
That's, those are the months the state says.
So.
The EPA suggests those, yeah.
And then I discussed with him the size, you know, some of the ponds are larger than others, and I think there needs to be some kind of, um, calculations on whatever the size the pond is, we need one or two fountains.
And I think Jim Kozelka had some information about that.
Yeah.
He'd brought that up.
He had brought that up before, yes.
Because we had mentioned this thing about like, back in February or something, a couple of them.
And he said the only, he said he's, at first, you know, I don't think John was really wanting a couple fountains, because it basically just, um, helps the aquatic life, um, but I'm like, you know, well, what about, you know, this side looks nice, because it has lots of water flow, and down here, it's all murky and whatever.
With the bugs and the animals.
Yeah, helps with mosquitoes, um, the aesthetics, keeps the water moving.
Yeah.
Um.
Doesn't wash them.
Yeah, it's like the oxygen transfer. So he is, uh, willing to, to revisit that and look at that and maybe get some size, fountains versus size going for us. So hopefully by the next Cal meeting, um, be able to get with John and see what he, what he has, but, um, that's basically what I talked to, to him about today, and he's gonna look at the ones I discussed.
So the EPA, is after you had mentioned something, the EPA says that if it's a fishing pond, that you may need to have enough pump to circulate, circulate the water, uh, at least one full time an hour, if it's just a, a basin, then it's twice an hour. So I guess our legislation would just be.
Twice an hour.
Whatever the gallons, cycle it, you know, whatever number we, but twice would keep it, I mean, the algae's probably not gonna be able to grow. Because it's gonna cycle.
And they're not gonna name efficient ponds because it's insurance rates.
Right.
Right, yeah, I mean, so twice an hour would meet what I had found on the internet from the EPA, I think it was their suggestion, it wasn't like their hard fast rule, but, that way we're not dealing, we're just listening, it needs to, if it's a thousand gallons, it needs to circulate twice an hour, figure out how many pumps you need.
Well, the pond over at Walker Point in that new section, if you turn right over there, they had stocked it with fish, and they have a fountain, and it looks good, I don't know what their.
It does, okay.
Their, um, gallonage is, but they do a good job running it and making sure, the only thing is, is kids keep swimming in that, and I'm like, stop going in there, there's a sign! But, I'm like, no, uh, yeah, the.
That's dark.
Yeah, that's a whole other thing.
No pressure.
Just, um, anything else on that?